Good evening. We will call the 73rd Annual Evendale Town Meeting to order, and we will begin with a prayer of invocation by Reverend Tommy Robertson.
Greetings to my Evendale family. It's always a blessing to be able to come together as fellowship and see each other because everybody's so busy. We ask that you continue to recognize and support the services and everybody that are working hard in Evendale to make it a safe community for all. We also ask that you'll continue to reach out and learn about all the different services and everything and pay attention to the information that they're giving us today. We also ask that you'll make it, if you don't know somebody here, reach out and meet them because they're part of the Evendale family. We also ask that you, uh, that you continue to bless Evendale and all the people here and all the people that'll be presenting and, uh, that you'll, that you'll do things in a, in a pleasant order and that we'll come together as one strong family. These things and all things I pray in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
We will present the color guard. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Zoe Egan will now lead us in the pledge of lea-, in the National Star Spangled Banner.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, The bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
We will now proceed to election of a moderator. May I have a motion? There's a move that Kevin Gorsuch be the moderator for this evening's event. Is there a second? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, hearing none. Kevin Gorsuch will be the moderator for this evening. We now need a motion to elect the ICRC, which is the television broadcast of this event, as the secretary for the meeting. May I have a motion to elect them secretary? Is there a second? All in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed. ICRC is elected as the secretary. Okay.
Mr. Gorsuch? Where are you? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Finan. My name is Kevin Gorsuch. I've been a 39-year resident, and I am honored today to be your moderator. And I was told when I was asked that I should keep the, the meeting moving, but he also said I was going to have a microphone. And I said, well, how am I going to keep it moving? He says, well, you know, keep it moving, but you're giving me a microphone. And you're giving me a bully pulpit. But on a serious note, I am pleased and honored to be here. And our first person up is Mayor Finan.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for coming tonight. It's, uh, this is the, uh, great to have you here. I hope tonight you can go home with a little more knowledge of the village of Evendale and what's going on here and that, uh, a lot of things are happening, uh, here in the village. We're going to, around the area, you have a lot of show and tell. So while you're here tonight during, after dinner, so forth, take advantage to see the fire department's display, the service department, the different stuff that talks about what's going on in the village of Evendale, and it'll, uh, make quite, quite an impression on you. The first thing on the agenda that I have, the first slide, is a slide of our staff. I could not, and council could not function without the availability of our great staff. They've all been with us quite a number of years, and they do a wonderful job. The other picture on there is awarding, uh, a $400,000 award to Mike Hooven of Enable Injections. Maybe you've never heard of Enable Injections, but they are a business that's been in Evendale for a number of years over on, uh, the highway, and they have agreed to 10 years to remain in Evendale in return for some incentives that we have provided to him. There'll be a little bit more about, uh, Enable Injections later. Also is picture of Michelle Gottlieb, uh, receiving an award for her community service from the Hamilton County Planning Commission. The second slide we have is a snapshot of the village. We're still 4.74 miles. We have about 206, 2,669 residents, but our daytime population continues. It says 2,000, but I suspect we've gone up quite a bit courtesy of General Electric in the last, in the last year. And it has a list of, uh, the companies that are in Evendale. Very interesting. Recently, three of our companies have been designated as, uh, being world-class companies. That's General Electric Company, Gold Medal Products, and Formica. Their, their, they consist, their world headquarters are here in the village of, of Evendale. The third slide we have is about GE Aerospace. You know, many of you know that this year they became GE Aerospace and a freestanding company. They no longer have subsidiaries, and as such, they are now, our small village is headquarters to one of the major companies in the world for what's happening. In March, they announced a $650 million state investment, and they have said that over the years, they will have 1,000 new jobs. Be a little bit more on them later of what they're doing here in Evendale. Next is Enable Injections. As we indicated before, uh, there, we entered into an agreement with them to have them stay- agreement with them to have them stay for ten years. In return, we have, uh, guaranteed them a million dollars of investment from us to help them, uh, change their, uh, operation from some manufacturing to a lot of offices and accounting and so forth and so on, uh, over on the drive. Uh, we have, uh, we've already paid them the first four hundred thousand. We'll pay them another four hundred thousand, uh, next year and two hundred thousand in the following year after that. Uh, it's a re- business retention job, a retention situation. And, uh, we, we really expect this company to, and a lot of people do, to become a forty billion dollar company. So I think it was a very wise investment by, by the village and, um, by the council. Uh... Next we have, uh, in, uh, Enable Injection, oh, Enable Injections, what they do is they make a small medical device that you can fit on your body and it releases a medicine at a certain given time into your body without the need of a doctor or further prescriptions. And, uh, that's why they're, uh, going, going, uh, great, great guns. Okay. Now we have, we cut the ribbon this year on GTC, which is, uh, General Tool Company. Uh, they're in the Arrow Hub section of our village. Uh, it's a, uh, award-winning manufacturing company. They make, uh, aeronautical, uh, aerospace and defense industry items. Uh, they're, uh, right now in Evendale. They're manufacturing power plants for destroyers. Uh, these power plants weigh about ninety-five thousand pounds and are hauled out, I think about every three or four weeks. They haul one out of their plant. So, uh, it's, uh, I think it's quite a coup for the, uh, village to, uh, to be able to, uh, to get them in, to get them into the village and become a part of our, of our, uh, of our people. Uh, they started out with, uh, forty-seven employees and they expect to add to that over the coming years. Next is, uh, an interesting company, which, uh, we have now brought into the village of Evendale. Um, first of all, we purchased a building on Spartan Drive. I don't know whether you know where that is. That's over on the west side of, uh, Arrow Hub Drive in Evendale. And, uh, we were remodeling that building to accommodate new startup innovation companies. Uh, and these innovation companies may have a small number of employees, but they expect, and we expect them, uh, to, uh, grow quite a bit. Uh, the first one that has taken advantage of that is a company called Angel Aerial. Angel Aerial makes drones. The thing that makes them different from other drone companies is that most drones can fly about thirty minutes, can stay in the air about thirty minutes. Their drones can stay in the air for two hours. That makes them much more palatable for emergency crews and the, uh, Office of Homeland Security is very, very interested in, uh, in their, in their product and, and what they are doing, uh, in, in the situation. We have had, um, multiple tours of the, by the state of Ohio of our buildings. Uh, we are on, in ongoing discussions with, um, the QTC building, which is over also in the area of the gun range. And, uh, we're hoping we can, uh, provide something out of that. Uh, it has been sold, but, uh, it may not be sold. Also, we have rezoned a hundred and thirty acres in addition, uh, mainly, uh, the place where the, um, (laugh) St. Rita's is on the hill. Um, St. Rita's is, uh, having some problems and, uh, we have rezoned it to the Arrow Hub concept. We have also rezoned Spartan Drive to the Arrow's, Arrow Hub content. Uh, we have, we should be able to start before the end of this year on, uh, the concept of an elevator for the Cultural Arts Center. As many of you know who have traversed those steps up to that place, you take your, uh, life in your hands when you go up and you may not get up at all. And, uh, so we want to build an elevator. It's become a challenge, but, uh, it's, uh, something that we, we badly, badly want to do, badly want to do. Village Crossings, which is a little shopping center down there in Evendale, uh, we have secured all of the necessary property to build an addition to the street back there and to make it more available for redevelopment. Um, the, um, idea is to be able to attract some businesses. It's been vacant for a very, very long period of time. And, uh, we hope that this will provide the incentive to, uh, allow it to, uh, go forward. We also entered into aggregation, uh, pro- programs this year for oil and gas. Uh, our gas supplier is AE Energy and our electric supplier is Denergy. Uh, they are both, uh, serviced by Duke Energy and the billing comes from Duke Energy, but the numbers give you a small, a small reduction in the cost of your utilities, uh, each and every year. Our service building is under construction and there'll be more discussion of that later, but you can see some pictures around here of what it's going to look like. We're, it's a six point one million dollar project and we'll talk about that, uh, a little bit later. Um, actu- financially, we dug the first spade full of earth for the new regional safety center over in Colrain Township. And this will eliminate the gun range from the village of Evendale. It'll take two years to get it built. It'll be two thousand and twenty-six, but we finally got the thing underway. It's a thirty-one million (laugh), as I, I agree with you. It's a thirty-one million dollar, uh, project and it is funded by the county, the city, the federal and the state components are, are into that, uh, situation. I think that pretty much gives you an idea of what the village of Evendale has been up to and will be available to, uh, answer questions later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Finan. Uh, I for one am glad you're leading this village into the twenty-first century. Uh, next up, we're going to hear from, uh, each council member on areas of their responsibility. And first up is Beth McDaniel, speaking on, uh, Gorman Heritage Farm.
Good afternoon. My name is Beth McDaniel and it is my pleasure today to report on Gorman Heritage Farm. So a few weeks ago, I signed up through the Evendale Cultural Arts Center to attend a photo walk through Gorman Farm with, uh, a photographer. His name's Glenn Hartong. Um, he's a local photographer. It just happened to be the most beautiful Sunday ever. The sun was shining, the sky was blue and the sunflowers were in full bloom. So I decided, as I was walking, that I'm going to use that opportunity to share some of my photos that I took that day with you. So you get to go along with me on my photo walk. Now, lucky for you, I'm not going to share all two hundred and seventy photos that I took that day. I'm just going to share a few of my favorites. So let's get started. So pumpkins are always a great photo op. So there's my pumpkins. This is a photo of Glenn Hartong. He was our leader for the walk. He brought his wife along with him, who, she's also a photographer. She's taught at the Cultural Arts Center, um, a few years ago. And we asked them so many questions about photography. Now, he had his fancy camera, but all the pictures that I'm going to show you today, I took with, just with my phone camera. So, okay, so this is one of my favorites. Go ahead, ooh and ah over that, please. Yes, I took this picture in the cutting garden. Um, this year I actually bought myself a Cutting Gardens membership subscription. So, um, each week I got to go and cut a variety of flowers and then I went home and tried to arrange them in a vase. I kind of took it as a challenge each week. So I learned a lot, but will definitely be suggesting a flower arranging class next year. Um, that would be very helpful for me. So, oh, and here's Barb Ross, our village clerk. She was on the photo walk with me. So it was very fun. Okay. And then Gorman, Gorman Heritage Farm offers a wide variety of seasonal produce, some as commonplace as potatoes, some as exotic as Egyptian walking onions and German red garlic. The produce is available at their retail store or by subscription through their community-supported agriculture CSA program. If you're interested in being part of that, check their website. There's lots of information, um, on there. Turkeys. The turkeys are always fun to watch, especially during feeding time, which I happen to be there by. Speaking of turkeys, they were almost sold out last week, but I think there's still a few left. But so you can check to see if you can still get one for your Thanksgiving dinner. Okay. So this area right here, um, when I was there earlier this summer, the pigs were in this area, but now it is being transformed into a natural playscape. This will area here will provide endless opportunities for kids to learn and discover in a natural playground. Um, there will be trees to climb, logs to jump over, water, rocks, mud, and lots of other natural features for kids to discover. And grants have provided, uh, the funding for this project and I am excited to see how it progresses. So this is just the first part of it. Last year, when I reported about Gorman Farm, um, I talked about the H2 Ohio Wetland Rest- Restoration Project. So this is a picture of, they have like protection around the trees there. Uh, but this is the top portion, um, and it's completely finished. And work will begin on the lower portion of the Gorman Creek soon. So to get ready for this, um, talk, I met with Caroline Bear, who is the farm's interim executive director. And we walked all around the farm. She took me on a wonderful tour of the farm. And she told me that one of the focuses in 2025 will be on ways that they can elevate each visitor's experience at the farm. So one simple way to do this is with better signage to help people get around the farm. So they are working now to identify needs, the areas of need and designing directional signs, probably fancier than this directional sign, um, that will benefit all visitors as they navigate their way from the interpretive center throughout the farm and all the hiking trails. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that. They also received a grant from the Ohio History Fund and they have already installed, um, interpretive signs that explain what the historic structures are and what the function of each of those structures was and is now on the farm. So these are really interesting and you can kind of do your own little self-guided tour around the farm and learn about the history of all the buildings. So school field trips and tours continue to thrive at the farm. School groups visiting the farm learn about the structure and function of an animal, food sources and Ohio history. But we continue to encourage all visitors to the farm to enjoy, explore, and find ways to incorporate education into every visit. So whenever I go to the farm, I always learn something new. So during this visit, um, Caroline told me that Gorman, Gorman Farm grows corn to feed their animals. I knew that part. I did, I didn't learn that. I knew that part. But what I didn't know, and I'm, you know, maybe you guys are way farmier than I am, but I did not know that they add different nutrients to the corn depending on what the animal needs. Like the laying chickens, they get the corn, but they get certain nutrients in their corn. They get different ones than the chickens that are hanging out at the front entrance. So I thought that was kind of interesting. I also learned that we grow asparagus on the farm. I had no idea what an asparagus plant looked like, but unfortunately I did not get a picture of that. So you all are going to have to go to the farm yourself and find the asparagus plants and see what they look like. So I know you are all wondering, what are some ways that you can get involved also at Gorman Farm? Uh, number one, you can visit the farm, enjoy the gardens, historic farmyard, or take a hike on the trails. You can become a member of the farm. Evendale residents are always welcome to visit the farm, but you're not automatically members of the farm. Membership supports the farm and provides discounts on programs, classes, and camps. You can volunteer at the farm. There are lots of different opportunities for everyone to volunteer. You can take a class at the farm. It's a great way to have fun and learn lots of new things. You can bring a child or a grandchild to the farm, go for a visit. They have preschool story hours. They have summer camp. And you can always attend a fundraiser at the farm. The Sunflower Festival in October and the Row by Row Dinner in August are great ways to support the farm and have some fun with your neighbors. So I'd like to thank Caroline for giving me that great tour of the farm. And I encourage everybody to stop in and see this wonderful treasure that we have right in the middle of Evendale. Thank you all.
Thank you, Beth. Uh, I think you can all agree that the Gorman Farm is a huge treasure for the village of Evendale and we should all support it. Uh, next up, uh, Bill Pudoff will speak on the cultural arts and recreation.
Thank you, Kevin. It's good to see everybody this year. It's a lot better than seeing twenty-five people out here over the past couple of years after COVID. First off, I'm going to speak a little bit about the, uh, Evendale Cultural Arts Center. So 2024 year in review. This past year at the Evendale Cultural Arts Center and Bell Tower Arts Pavilion, uh, has been filled with memorable programs and significant achievements. Our arts initiatives continue to play a vital role in enriching the cultural life of our community and 2024 was no exception. We've made key facility improvements to support these activities, including a new roof on the Bell Tower Arts Pavilion, ensuring its readiness for future events. Additionally, a new elevator, as the mayor mentioned, uh, is being planned and, and should go out to bid, uh, in, in just another few weeks, I think. Um, so we're getting, we're getting close on that. It's been something that we've talked about for, I think, decades. So hopefully now we can gain some better access to the, to the Cultural Arts Center. Now let's take a look back at some of the accomplishments and events that made 2024 a standout year. In the theater and musical performances, the Bell Tower Arts Pavilion hosted vibrant productions, including The Lion, The Witch, and the Wardrobe, and Thomas and the Library Lady by Playhouse in the Park. Highlights also featured Cincy Lab Theater, New Works Festival, The Ladies' Foursome, Thirty-Nine Steps, and the American Folk Music School Concert. Art exhibitions and Photo Focus Biennial, we showed significant exhibits like the we showed significant exhibits like the Evendale Fine Arts Exhibit, which has been going on for over 20 years. It's a fabulous show. Frances Huffman's Winners Show, and hosted two special photography exhibits as part of the 2024 Photo Focus Biennial, enhancing our profile in the arts community. Now, the gentleman that Beth spoke about was the juror for one of those photo exhibits. Actually, it's, it's right out here on the pool fence. So if you haven't had a chance to see it, feel free to walk around there. It might be getting dark, but anytime. It's gonna be up for another month or so. So feel free to go out and check out this exhibit. It's a, it was a juror exhibit, and I think we had over 300 entries and about, there's about 90 out there, I think, on the fence. So please take advantage of that. We, we had world-class music instruction. Nearly 15 music instructors provided top-tier education and reinforcing, this reinforced the center's commitment to excellence in the music programs. Holiday and seasonal events. Our inaugural Holiday Art Vendor Fair and Seventeenth Annual Sparkling Wine Tasting made the center a key destination for festive community gatherings. We partnered with organizations and community, or in other groups with community use. We supported events from groups like the Boy Scouts and local arts clubs. This fostered community engagement and expanded our program offerings. Looking ahead in 2025, 2025 promises even more exciting programming and building improvements as we continue to bring arts to Evendale in extraordinary ways. We're committed to enriching the cultural fabric of our community and look forward to another year of creativity, growth, and connection. Before I complete that report, I'd like to thank Susan and her cast of characters, employees, vendors, and, and many volunteers for their commitment to the arts in Evendale. Okay, next, I wanna talk a little bit about the Evendale Recreation Center. 2024 Year in Review. This past year at the Evendale Recreation Center has been filled with memorable programs. I want to start by thanking Adam and his team for all their efforts in creating recreation opportunities for residents of all ages. The recreation grounds inside and out were transformed into a winter wonderland in January. As the Snow Much Fun Event, with Mother Nature's perfectly timed snow landscape, was attended by over 450 guests aged zero to 90. Extravaganza continues to grow each year and appeals to young families and village grandparents, grandparent population. The Daddy Daughter Dance was revamped this year to a Date Night with Dad to great success, with a 50% increase in attendance. Dads and daughters love the new interactive format, and we are already planning how we can wow them again in 2025. We, we got the pickleboard, pickleball courts over there. They were completed and are getting a great deal of play. I see quite a few people over there using those. We opened the pool season with a family pool party and closed it out with a bash, including a movie on the big screen. These events continue to increase in number each year with attendance of the, of 353 at the family pool party and 318 at the pool bash. Fun in the Sun Summer Camp was attended by 228 registered participants. Highlights included tie dye, dress-up days, sports, crafts, pool days, and of course, the Mario Kart Tournament. July 4th was another memorable one for the village. The forecast made us rework a few things on the fly, but it was a wonderful day and a wonderful way to celebrate the holiday. 285 runners-walkers joined us to start the day at Conquer the Hill, the 10K run and walk, and many hundreds more joined our family fun, inflatables, music, food trucks, and a wonderful show from Rosy's Famous Fireworks. The Summer Concert Series at the Founder's Pavilion was very well-attended, even with one very rare cancellation due to untimely storms. We are currently working on the 2025 lineup. I gotta say this every year. The Evendale Eagles Swim Team won the NSSL Championship for the 13th year in a row. Congratulations to the Eagles. September 1st marked the start of a new era with the introduction of online registrations for our programs here at the village and also for programs involving the Cultural Arts Center. Our online capabilities will continue to grow in the future. If you have any questions regarding this, please contact the Recreation Center, and they'll, they'll try to answer all your questions. It's gonna be a good thing for us. The Mother-Son Amazing Race was held in October, and we had 30 mother-and-son teams competing against each other. The Halloween Fest, it's the largest special event of the year for the community, and it was attended by over 800 residents. Enjoying a special fall evening in the village with activities and food for all ages. The Special Events Team is always looking for ways to brighten up spaces. Most recently in October, the Glendale-Milford Islands, right over here, I think that's the right direction, were illuminated with Halloween colors and hope it added a smile to your drive. In December, we will have the Gingerbread House Program. The residents spoke and we listened. Take Home Kits are a huge hit, born from necessity from COVID, but now are a part of our programming. In 2023, 77 residents either enjoyed this event in person or with a special kit at home. In 2024, it looks like we may top that number with 75 resident, or 75 registrations already, and 10 more on a waiting list, it looks like. So hopefully, our, our gingerbread team can make a few extras and everybody can, can participate. File and to Pie continues to be a vital part of our community. We currently have over 40 active members. The teens volunteer at all the community events, continue the tradition of the rake and run, meet every Wednesday night. They take trips, and most of them even get all their homework done. And to close, I want to congratulate Dan Hunt's U8 Girls Soccer Team and Joy Miller's U10 Boys Soccer Team. Both are advancing to the state tournament to be held in Fairfield next weekend. And good luck to Dan and Joy's teams. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. You gotta agree, I mean, for a village our size to have two world-class assets like our recreation department and our cultural arts and for a nominal amount, hats off. That's fantastic, so thank you. Next up, we'll have words from Tom Sextrow on service and engineering.
Thank you, Kevin. Good to see a full house tonight. It's been a few years. Again, my name is Tom Sextrow, and I'm reporting on the Service and Engineering Report this evening. This department is managed by our director, James Jeffers. This department has 10 full-time employees, two part-time employees, and three seasonal employees. Last week, James and I walked some of the property so I could get a better understanding of their daily activities. And currently, they manage 88 acres of Evendale's five-square miles. This crew does an outstanding job. So if you see them out and about, stop and say thank you and a job well done. They, they take a lot of joy in what they do, and they love making Evendale beautiful. In addition to the typical services provided by this department, such as grass cutting, brush clipping, special pickups, and maintaining the village buildings, the department has completed these projects and are continuing others for the enhancement of the village. And these other projects would include snow removal. This department responded to five snow events last winter and used over 400 tons of salt. The salt dome can hold up to 1,100 tons, just to have on hand, because you never know. We have seven snowplows, so we can react and complete this task in a timely manner. Shred in the Recycling Day. This year, a total of 40,000 pounds were collected, a slight decrease from last year. This includes five and a half tons of paper, seven tons of household chemicals, six tons of electronics, and 150 tires were collected. Next year's event is scheduled for April 26th. Leaf Bag Program. To date, we have distributed 24,000 bags to over 320 households. We do have extra bags, so if you are interested, just drop by the service building Monday through Friday between 8:00 and 3:00 until supplies last. And they're yours, they're yours to take. Street Tree Replacements. The department has identified 40 trees within the right-of-way of Cooper Road, Glendale-Milford Road, Redding Road, to be removed and replaced. That's going on as we speak. So this year, there's 40 trees. Last year, there was 59 trees that we replaced in the right-of-ways of the Village of Evendale. Pickleball Courts. David, a slide, please. Pickleball, the, the pickleball courts opened earlier this year, very well-received. So a lot of people standing around, spectators watching, and players waiting to play. So this apartment had built this shelter house. Has a nice seating area and it's covered. So that was a nice addition to the pickleball courts. Next slide, please. The Sand Volleyball Containment Wall. I work out quite early in the morning, and this is, they were, they were building that wall at 4:00, 4:30 in the morning. Why that early, I'm not sure. But it's done now. It's, it's, it's a beautiful volleyball court. It serves two piece, serves two purposes. It keeps the sand in place, because the high winds would blow the sand away. To fill that, they added 200 tons of sand. Another benefit of the containment wall is it encompasses the entire court, so it's a nice seating area for spectators. Next slide, please. Evendale Commons Parquet Walk Path. You wonder what a parquet is? It's a small park, very small park. And, and this is over by Evendale Commons, you know, Menards and, and Walmart. And it's actually on the far west side behind Menards, but it's 600 feet of sidewalk that the department had built. It, it circles the pond there, and it's, it's a public park. So if you feel like taking a little getaway, and it's very private, feel free. It's, it's open to the public. Thanks, David. Other projects completed in 2024. The enclosed shelter house did receive a new epoxy floor system. As Bill had said, the Bell, the Bell Tower Arts Pavilion did receive a new roof. Road resurfacing program was very well-received this year. We reserved, we resurfaced six streets covering 3.5 lane miles using 3,500 tons of asphalt, a lot of asphalt. In addition, Kingsfort and Braywood were resurfaced due to an issue with the previous asphalt that was poured last year. Also note that the department, again, they take pride in what they do to get ready for this road resurfacing. They repaired or replaced 16 catch basins before the project started. Ongoing projects, the mayor spoke a little bit about the, the new service building. That's the most exciting thing going on right now for the service department. It's a beautiful facility. It's, it's, if you travel north on Redding Road, you'll see it on the right-hand sign there. You can't miss it. It's very much needed. The original was built in 1965, the original service building. And we can't even store all of our equipment at that facility, so we have to store it off-site. Also, also if the crew wants to gather a certain piece of equipment, sometimes they have to move up to two to three to four different pieces of equipment to get the piece of equipment that they want. So the new service building is, is a big welcome to, to the entire village. We did have, the official groundbreaking for the, the new service building was August 8th. Currently, the site work and foundations are being constructed. As you can see, we have a, a video here after the slideshow that'll be ongoing for you to watch. Also, two poster boards for us to view. And there'll be two entrances and exits, one on Redding Road and the other is the Annex Road. They're just east of the tennis courts in, in our complex here. And the project should be completed by May of 2025. Cultural Arts Center. The mayor and Bill both spoke a little bit about this. So all I'm gonna add is that with the elevator, now we have access to all levels of the building for the general public. So it'll be a little bit more enjoyable. And the restrooms are being remodeled as well. Recreation Center Phase 3 for some renovation. This project will entail some renovations of the south portion of the rec center. Included will be an expanded babysitting area. Interior is finished in the south hallway, which will be tied in with the other activities rooms, including the locker rooms, fitness area, and the group exercise area. Projects anticipated for next year. Roof, road resurfacing. We're composing the documents right now to, for the roads to be resurfaced for next year. The salt dome roof replacement. This project will replace the shingle roof system at the salt dome off Medallion Road that you can see when you're heading west on Glendale-Milford Road. That, that roof is currently 25 years old. The Enclosed Shelter House Pond. This project will reconstruct the small pond at the woodbridge near the shelter house entrance. I guess this, again, this is the enclosed shelter house up on the east side here. Village Crossing Roadway. Again, this area is the former Central Trust Bank Lots there on the far corner where PG Graves, that little road comes out. We're gonna make that a real road, so it's more accessible to the general public, and it'll be, gives us some opportunity to, to build some new infrastructure for, for businesses in that corner. With that, this concludes my report on service and engineering. I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Tom. What I heard is service department needs a few more trees to cut down? So I can call them if I have some in my yard that need to come down? No. Another great service, you know, that we all get to, to partake of, that costs us very little. A great report, Tom. Thank you. Next up, Stephen Burke in Finance.
Thank you, Kevin. Welcome, everybody. And I get the pleasure of reporting on our finances for 2024. Many of the stuff has already been mentioned, but the first slide. Did you know? Village of Evendale audits are available on ohioaudit.gov. So if you ever wanna look at the audits, it is public information. So that's out there. Also, next, 12 clean audits in a row by the state. That's something to be... That's something to be proud of. How about our chief financial officer? She's twelve for twelve on clean audits since taking this position. Next slide, large expenditures. Salary study done in 2022, both fire and police. Adjustments made in fiscal 2023. The raises, the 2024 raises and the 2025 plan raises are important to keep us competitive with eight neighboring communities. It's really important that we stay competitive, otherwise we will lose our long-term employees to neighboring communities, which we do not want. Healthcare costs continue to increase. Congratulations to our staff for 2024 costs increased only four percent, where most employees in the area saw increases anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five percent. The village opt to bid our healthcare coverage contract in 2025 and received a five percent increase coming up. We keep our costs down by participating in wellness programs and bidding our plans. Revenue and service. The village recovered from the COVID downturn. The conservative budget and village reserves helped to preserve the budget of the village and allowed us to maintain consistent services, because I don't think anybody lost any services during these difficult years. Hats off to everybody for working within our means. Tax receipts are back on track, and we expect a surplus received from prior year, which were over seventeen point eight million last year. Through September, we were at sixteen point six, averaging one point eight million per month, so do the math, you will see that it continues to grow. This growth allows us to complete additional capital budget, projects, like the new service building that we've talked about, building on its north, on the north end of their campus and is expected to be completed in, as they said, May 2025, with a budget of six million dollars. In addition, a new fire truck will be ordered before the end of the year, which takes two years to complete. Talk about having a healthy backlog. Finally, planned renovations to the Culture Arts Center, elevator and bathrooms, which we talked about, and the Phase Three remodeling of the Recreation Center will be bid prior to the year-end in construction, starting in 2025. This slide, it's a little bit complicated, but as you can see from the, let's see, the blue line is our income coming in, and the red line is our expenditures, and the green line is our reserves. So 2020, you saw a jump up in our spending due to COVID, I mean, sorry, during the Arrow Hub road construction project. 2020 and 2021 restricted spending due to COVID, and you can see since 2020, 2021, it's been on a downhill curve since 2023 on expenditures. 2024, over eleven million dollar in capital spending planned and/or in progress. So these will all come together, and then you should see the green growing again. So we've been very fiscally responsible over this period of time to make sure that we are living within our means. Next slide. Budget planning. The village maintains a five-year budget plan with capital projects and options as requested by department heads. Multiple-year planning allows the village leaders to make smart decisions when allocating funds. Long-term planning helps to keep, to maintain the viability of the village for many years to come. Thank you for our finance department and for everybody working within what we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, for a very good report. Next up, we have Carolyn Smiley Robinson, who will give us an update on our police and fire department.
I'm not sure which it is, because I can't see the clock. Anyway, I just want to say, these departments have done a ton of work, and it's really difficult to represent what they do as well as they do it, but I'm going to give it my best try. I'm also going to say that I'd expected to do the fire report first, but I'm doing the police report, and I'm nothing if not flexible. So I try to get citizen involvement in when I do a presentation, so unfortunately, you already have the answer to the question that I would have asked, to ask you, how many calls for services do you think we have in the police department? So instead, just as a show of hands, I'm going to ask if you think that's an increase over 2023 or a decrease. So if you think that it's a higher number than 2023, just raise your hand. Okay. All right, if you think it's less, let me see a show of hands. Okay. So everybody thinks we're doing more work, we're doing different work, but I went back, since I did the police report last year, it's actually the same number of calls. Maybe a little bit different, but the same number. So the types of calls differ, and when you're talking traffic accidents, hazards, and disabled vehicles, repair of reckless or dangerous drivers, those are the most common ones that we have in the village. There's not a lot of difference every day of the week, any day, Monday through Friday, but I found it very interesting that on the weekend, kind of drops off a little bit. Now, is that because there are fewer people here, or is that because we're smarter on the weekends? I don't really know the answer to that, it just is. But the busiest hours are usually from ten AM to eleven PM. Okay. The police department focuses a lot on training. That's why we have such an excellent department. And let me say, I should have started out with this, but the police department remains firm in its commitment to professionalism, integrity, service, and courage, and you can tell this by how our community is supported. So in order to provide the kind of services the department does, that's why we invest so much in training for the department. Now, the state of Ohio mandates a number of hours of professional training, so that's twenty-four hours. But in our department, almost all members have completed this mandated training and then done an additional seventy-five hours of training. So that's important to us, because we look for a level of excellence in this department, and they deliver on that consistently, and part of that is due to the training that's done. And other things we get trained on are communications, mental health awareness, which is an increasing part of a police officer's duties these days, and so we're trying to step up and make sure that that's addressed properly by our department, leadership, and other tasks. Have to do that, because I'm a little challenged, because those words on the slide are a little bit small for me. Maybe they work for you. Traffic enforcement. It's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and if you don't believe this, try sometimes in my other life, from my job that I'm trying, this other job that I'm trying to desperately step away from right now, I've had to come home after eleven o'clock, and if you try to get on I-75 from the Sharon Road exit, thank goodness for the changes that were made to that, because though the speed limit is sixty-five, people are easily doing eighty-five as they whiz past me. But now I have a dedicated lane to get to Evendale, so it works out a lot better. The majority of traffic accidents occur Monday through Friday, and again, consistent with the calls that we receive, fewer on the weekends. But so far this year, we've had nearly three hundred accidents, thirty-one of which include minor injuries, four with serious injuries, and unfortunately, we've had a couple of fatalities as well. So I wanted to share with you a couple of things that are not on the slides, but I think are important for you to know. We also invest in new technology because of the rapid changes in technology and the improved way that the department wants to provide services. So in 2025, the department is going to have a new system for body worn and cruiser cameras. It's the most up-to-date technology and integrates with our internal records management system. It also integrates with the Flock system, and if you haven't heard of or are not aware of the Flock system, it's a specially license plate reading cameras that are strategically located throughout the village, and this has been used with great results in trying to address criminal activity that has gone on. And for example, we cleared a dozen criminal cases that probably would not have been cleared had we not had the Flock cameras in place. And a couple of examples of that has been a road rage shooting incident that occurred here in Evendale and a shooting incident in Sharonville. So those are the kinds of things that the department has recommended, council and mayor have supported, and we should all be aware of, helps keep us safe. Now, I was hint, part of this is due to our personnel. I didn't start out this year talking about who we hired or who we promoted and all that, because that's what I was saying two years ago about the police department. In a few minutes, I'm going to say that about the fire department, but a lot of that has to do with the leadership that we have in our police department. So we received a letter that speaks to the leadership of our chief, and it was, I'm reading it, but it was addressed to Mayor Finan, so I'm just going to read an excerpt from it. "Greetings, Mayor Finan. My name is Steve King, the past president of the Rotary Club of Cincinnati and chair of Project Heart Restart. I wanted to express my appreciation for your police chief, Tim Holloway. On February fourteenth, I attended the chief's meeting of the Hamilton County Police Association and presented the concept of collaborating with the HCPA to assess the needs of all serving police departments or AEDs." And I'll be speaking about AEDs a little bit more in the fire report. "The hope was that the support of the Hamilton County Police Chiefs Association would raise funds to equip all of the patrol cars on duty in our community and prevent deaths from sudden cardiac arrest. At the conclusion of my seven-minute presentation, your chief Holloway was the first to raise his hand to volunteer for the subcommittee. With his leadership, he formed and led a joint committee of the Association of the Chiefs of Police and the HCPA. Chief Holloway and his committee surveyed, called, and followed up on forty-six police agencies to determine the need for one hundred AEDs for twenty-six Hamilton County departments. Because of his quick work and his detailed assessment, the Project Heart Restart Committee was able to raise funds and deliver half of the units to twenty-six agencies on April twenty-fourth, just seven weeks later." So I just wanted to give you that excerpt. He goes on to say that Chief Holloway has been a critical partner and quiet hero of this historic public-private partnership to protect county residents. So we owe, we've gotten great leadership from Chief Holloway. We have other members of the department as well in the leadership positions who have stepped up. So in closing, what I'd like to do is quote the chief. "The police department presides itself on its culture of service to Evendale community. Over the last four years, almost forty percent of the police department staffing has changed due to retirements and new hires. There's also been a fifty percent change in the department's supervisory staff in that same time. What has remained consistent through all these changes has been the department's commitment to serving the residents and businesses. Throughout the changes, the department remains firm in its commitment to professionalism, integrity, service, and courage. In a time where recruiting and retention challenges are greatly impacting police staffing throughout the country, the department is thankful and appreciative of its relationship with and support from the village's elected officials, the residents of Evendale, and the local business communities." So please feel free to reach out to the department or stop by any time you have questions, concerns, or ideas you want to share with them. So I'd like to thank the police department for all the work that they do for us on a daily basis. It doesn't go unnoticed, but it's hard to evaluate. If you travel around the country, it's easy to see the difference, or I guess I can see the difference, because I've been on this committee and chaired it for the last couple of years. You can see the difference in how communities operate, and we appreciate so much what's done on our behalf by the police department. Okay. I'm going to move on to the fire department. Where I can now say what happened to the police department a couple of years ago is what happened to the fire department last year. I'm going to say it in a little bit different order than you have it on the screen, so you'll understand why we did what we did, when we did. So first of all, we had two longstanding captains retired. Dan Graham retired in August, and Captain Bob Murray retired in January. I can't see well out here, but I'm not, I don't believe either is here, so we'd like to really thank them for their service. Following right behind them, we promoted two lieutenants to captains, Andy Allard and Joshua Osbat. Now, if you're here, please stand up. I think captain, one of the captains is here. Captain Allard, we'd like to congratulate him, and he also drew the honor of being in charge of the fire department today, as the chief wasn't able to join. So thanks to the new captains who are making the transition seamlessly in the fire department, as well as how it happened in the police department. So once we promoted those lieutenants to captains, we promoted two firefighters to lieutenants, and that would be Stephen Roos and Andy Wilfong. I'm not sure. The ones. So with that, then we needed to hire two new firefighter paramedics. I also chaired a hiring committee, and I want to tell you, it was an interesting few months trying to get all of the hirings and promotions done, and they are Ian Omen Shane and Andy Robbins, so we welcome them to the Village of Evendale. And last, but certainly not least, is some of the people that retired or have retired or left the department recently also used to do our fire inspections, and the chief has been advocating for a full-time fire inspector for a while, and we actually did that in 2024, and we hired Robbie Potter, who has, you'll hear him report or seeing a report later. He's been very busy, and it's been a great addition to the department. So we welcome him as well to the Village of Evendale and for all he's doing to keep So this year, we celebrated the fifty-ninth annual chili lunch in cooperation in cooperation with the Evendale Chamber of Commerce. If you didn't get a chance, it's very well attended. And this is a great partnership that has gone on during the years, and it also helps provide for scholarships. So please continue to support it. The date is always in June, I believe. So just look for it next year and continue to be in support of that. We made some physical changes to the firehouse itself. There was a new bay floor installed, new bay doors installed, new flooring and paint on the administration side of the building. And also, we're looking at ways to make the firehouse a better facility for our firefighters that are currently here and the expectation in years as people continue to retire and we hire new people that we can handle the staffing needs and facilities for those coming on board. So we've done a feasibility ju- study on what could be done. The results are still pending, but that's something that we're looking into. And a new building generator was ordered and is waiting to be installed. Some significant training that the fire depart- fire department goes through. The fire department, well, I should say this way. We emphasize training, any of you who have ever, if you're in business or government or whatever field you're in, in order for your employees to do the job the way that they need to do the job, training is always important. But in these professions, it's really important to stay current on what are the best techniques and to make sure that you're able to do that. So to that end, the fire department has been doing what's called blue card training. That's Incident Command Training, and 90% of the department has completed this training. They also participated in live burn training that took place at Scarlet Oaks. And we'd rather do that than have live training on a fire that affects a business or a residence here in the community. So members have completed over 2,300 hours of company training, 190 hours of officer training, and 350 hours of drivers' training as well, and as well as hazardous materials training. So that's a lot of training, but it's well worth it to ensure our safety. And to this end, the department gets evaluated every 10 years for something called ISO. That's an insurance measurement. And just so you know that that me, what that program does, it rates communities and helps us evaluate the quality of our fire protection services. And then insurance companies then turn around, and it helps determine the cost of fire insurance premiums for your homes and for businesses. And we are proud to report that we again received an ISO 2 rating, which is very difficult to achieve. The lower your rating is, the better you are, the better served you are, the lower your rates are. It is very difficult to achieve an ISO 1 rating, particularly with smaller departments, but we're still working on that. But again, we were rated a 2, and I'd like to congratulate the department again on maintaining that ISO 2 rating. Got a few things to manage up here. So we don't just concentrate on people, we also concentrate on equipment. So many of you may not know that fire trucks have a useful life somewhere in that 20 to 30-year range, usually averaging around 25 years. Well, we're in a situation now where we need to purchase a new rescue engine to replace the 2001 Sutford Rescue Engine that we currently have. So we passed an ordinance last month, no, this is November now. September, we passed an ordinance to order a new rescue engine. And the thing about them is that you have to order them well in advance because it's going to take us 28 months to get it. And it costs over a million dollars, actually closer to 1.1 million. But we got savings because purchasing it in September gave us a substantial discount. So that's coming. And also, we need to replace an ambulance. So that's been narrowed down to, we're going to purchase it from the Horton Corporation, but we haven't entered into contract, but we'll do that early next year. So that's around $450,000. I think it's a little over that to do an ambulance. So these are significant purchases. But part of our funds that we collect when we do EMS runs and things like that are used to offset the costs. It's not all totally coming out of tax dollars. So, and I've already spoken about the ISO review. And then we held an open house for the 65th anniversary of the department. And that's a significant achievement. And if you didn't have an opportunity to come and, and see that demonstration, there was something for everyone there. There was a live burn, there was an opportunity. I personally enjoyed that, you know? My sons have now gotten to the point where they are young men. They're older young men even at this point. But to see children participating in how you try to rescue someone. There was a dummy there that they were timed on their, their trial. And it was, and, and children had fun, and it was a good learning opportunity for them as well. So you have, just hold, hold a minute, Dave. You have a switch to the next one, right? I can't see. Oh, there are a switch. So I can ask you to guess how many runs that the fire department does. But it's a significant amount, 555 details for just within the building. And, I mean, within the community and 427 in mutual aid. And if you don't know what mutual aid is, no department, no suburban department in this area could exist without help from other communities, depending on the significance of the fire event. So there's a duplication there. I mean, we, we also even look at who purchases what to make sure that each community isn't trying to reinvent the wheel and do the same things. So there's a significant amount of work going. Those are just the fire crews. The medical crews do 562 details to date, and 91 is part of mutual aid. And then when I spoke about our new fire marshals, real, kudos to him, 459 fire inspections. And, and he's been successful in getting businesses that haven't been, haven't had their properties up to code, getting them up to code. And he goes back and does re-inspections. And we've even had to refer someone to the state of Ohio because they kept ignoring our citations. And the state found on our behalf, by the way. So we're also participating in Project Adam with Evendale Elementary. And it's about sudden cardiac arrest program of awareness. And I think it, it coincides with what we were speaking about earlier in the police department that Chief Holloway was working on. And then we began partnered with Toys for Tots. There's still more, still more. I'm almost there. So there are community CPR courses. And this year, over 110 residents were trained. So stay, I'm sure there will be more offered in 2025. So please look out for that. And then on the AEDs. I said I was going to remember this, which I believe are automated external defibrillators. So nobody has to ask that question. We have 10 new stations installed throughout the village, and it helps detect heart arrhythmia and gives quick electrical shock if needed to a victim in recovery. And this is really important in saving lives. And we're very proud to be, if not on the front edge of it, that we have done this and we have made this commitment. I saw a news story a couple of days ago about the need for that, and someone was working on that. And then, of course, if you made it over to the rec center at one time, you saw that all of our firefighters got a portrait done for them. And it only took 60 minutes for each portrait, and they were very good likenesses of our fire department. So the departments have been busy. And while I apologize for taking so much time to talk about it, these are, it's really important to every community to have strong safety service support. And we really and truly appreciate all that the fire department and the police department do for us. But I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the fire department for their continued great service, and we appreciate it greatly. And with that, I'm going to sit down. But I wasn't the one keeping you from eating.
Thank you, Carolyn, for a very thorough report. Next up on the agenda is Chris Patterson, speaking to Building, Zoning, and CIC.
Good evening. At this point, at this point in the night, we're all acutely aware of a couple of things. One is I'm the last impediment between now and dinner, which meant, which meant prior to me getting up here, I was on the clock. But one of my little gremlins has told me that we are seriously on the clock and the caterers are getting ready to haul out of here, so we need to modify this. So being a good sales guy, there's nothing that we can't do if not pivot. So I'm going to, I am going to blast through this if anybody needs anything, and then we're going to go to dinner quickly. Bottom line is, Building, Zoning, CIC, it's a huge collaborative enterprise. We've got lots of people involved in the village. Kevin Gorsuch, Chris Tony, Sheila Cedar, Dave Bostrom are, all do an incredible job on, on either the Planning Commission or the BZA. Hugh McKinnon leads CIC, they do a fabulous job. What you're going to see is we've done an awful lot with GE. Want to reinforce what the mayor said about how important they are to our future and what we can do. We've got some neat projects coming up with the Evendale Sportsplex, a $16 million renovation. We've got some Arrow Hub buildings that are getting sold, expanded. We've done, in Planning Commission, a number of things to set the stage for the coming year. We've kept up the village in terms of taking care of people who are not doing their fair share to keep the village beautiful and, and up to date. And all in all, it could not have been a better year. I will be more than happy to stand right over there and talk to anybody who wants to see the full thing. But dinner is important, we thank you for coming, this is a great thing, let's go.
Thank you, Chris. So what we're going to do, Delight Moore is going to go from table to table and release you. So don't get up right away. And we're going to, if you have a question, while you're in the room, there's a microphone, we're going to stay up here. Or you can come up and talk to us on the podium. So it'll be your choice whether you want everybody to hear it or you want to come up and, and address it to whichever candidate or whichever council person you want to address it to. So with that. Tommy, Tommy, are you doing grace for us for dinner?
All right. I know you're hungry and you're ready to eat, so I'm going to be brief. Want to, want to thank for this food, the Lord, for this food that we're going to have, that we're going to eat for, for our bodies. And we, and we, we also want to bless those that prepared it for us. And we also pray that we'll continue to have, excuse me, have more festive gatherings like this in the future. And that maybe we'll have more time to, to answer everybody's questions publicly. These things are all things, I pray to Jesus Christ, amen.
I live at 3300 Twilight Drive. I'm the one with the red roof that's being repainted. But I keep, you know, for the past couple of years, you've been going on and on about this license, camera licensing so we can solve all these things that are going on. But I understand there's been quite a few break-ins lately. And I want to know, whoever is in charge of the fire, what is the going on to solve the break-ins that were on Britton Trail? And the rest of us haven't heard much, but we need to know so we can also keep ourselves safe. So thank you very much.
I thank Tim. Tim, are you going to answer that question?
I can answer.
All right, one more, one moment, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, there have been a number of vehicle break-ins over the last few months. And what we've noticed is a pattern is not just Evendale, it's a lot of the suburban communities where you get break-ins, where you get hit with several for a few nights in a row, then you won't have any for months at a time. It's a pattern, they're, they're young juveniles, sometimes as young as 11, 12 years old, up to about 15, 16 years old. Basically, in, in most of these situations, they are either looking to steal Hyundai's or Kia's or find guns in cars. We have had extra patrols out in the evening, and our, and our night shift folks have been spending more time in the neighborhoods. As Ms. Smiley-Robertsen mentioned, the Flock cameras, it helps us track cars that come in and out of Evendale at night. So we're actively working those investigations, and we're out there more often at night. And you can't take my word on that one because no one's up at 3 o'clock in the morning to, to see whether we're out there. But we're out there more often at night, and, and we're doing the best we can with it. The question was about notification. And we, we can put stuff out on the emergency services Facebook page, that's the best way to do it. To be quite honest with you, neighbor to neighbor, you will probably get the information quicker than you will get it from us. So make, make sure to be communicative with your neighbors. And especially stuff like if you have surveillance cameras on your house, let the neighbors know. Because if we get a car broken into, if we go around knocking on a few neighbors' doors to see who had cameras, it, it, it's luck whether or not we're going to catch the neighbors there during the day when we're investigating these. So being good neighbors, communicating with each other, make sure it all gets communicated back to the police department is helpful also. We do not have a registry of cameras. I would be glad to talk about that at some point in the future. Some people may want to know, and other ones may not. But if there's a crime in your neighborhood that you're aware of and it may have been captured on your camera, please check it and let us know. We'll, we'll get that footage right away.
My wife fell out by the mailbox Thursday, and the policeman happened to see it, so he stopped and helped her to the door. We found out today she has a blood clot in her left leg. So, again, thanks to everybody.
Thank you, sir. We, we hope she's recovering. Any other questions?
Hi, Susan Sprawl, ninety-nine twenty-two Pheasant Walk Court. I have noticed, we've noticed an increase in solicitors, solicitation, people coming around, knocking on the doors, windows insurance. One gentleman said he was from the Evendale Electric Aggregation. And we called the police, who reviewed our cameras, and, you know, we got a picture of the guy. But what, what's the procedure process? Do we just keep calling and saying, you know, we've got these, these folks approaching our homes? I mean, we're just seeing increases. I'm not sure who addresses that and what the process is there.
A chief's coming. Tim, you might wanna stay close.
Yeah, well, and then there's some political flyers all over our front yard. What's that all about? Sorry.
Yeah, I know, I guess it was a week and a half ago, I think, over a two-day period, we probably had eleven or twelve different calls about the same solicitor. And we, we had two guys up in the neighborhood for the better part of forty-five minutes to checking that, checking that specific area. We were unable to locate the person. It, it's not unusual if they start to see a police car in the area. Let's say they're maybe up at a front porch, and we don't see them. If they see a police car in the area, they'll leave. Other ones will stick around because they know that, at the end of the day, that we're, we're gonna tell them they have to leave, or they have to go get a soliciting permit. We're reluctant to cite somebody for the soliciting unless we've given that individual prior warnings about the behavior. So, the best thing, again, to do is to call us right away, and, and I know you have. And, and we'll continue to, to respond and try and catch these folks.
Did Jim keep some of his handcuffs when he retired? No? Oh.
Hi, Jennifer McMahon from Margate Terrace. My question is for some other people that have asked me, because the previous mayor had, which I was most grateful, put sidewalks in on Wise Carver. And there have been other people that have come to me and said, "We would like sidewalks on Kingsport." Not asking for sidewalks everywhere, all over, but wanted to find out, what do you have to do to get sidewalks on Kingsport?
We have had three or four surveys in the village over the last ten years. And each time, they come back that people do not want sidewalks in general. The problem always comes down to, do you want the sidewalk in front of your house? No. Do you want it on the other side of the street? Yes. So, which side of the street gets the sidewalks? The second, the second problem is, it then becomes a large maintenance problem for the village, in that we have to clean snow and ice and everything like that off of those sidewalks. I think the third thing is that people feel that the village has a certain ambiance about it, that the, the lack of sidewalks contribute to that situation. And it, it's just that sidewalks would be very, very expensive to install, very expensive to install, I guarantee you.
Thank you for that question.
Okay. Tony Mizoney on Rexford Drive. Will we ever get, or consider speed bumps on Cooper? Those people drive sixty miles an hour down that street, and I feel someday, somebody's gonna lose control and kill somebody walking down the street, like me.
And while James is walking to the microphone, I would like to recognize his thirty-four years of service to this village.
So, we've had the issue of speed bumps come up in a number of occasions. I mean, one of the problems that we, we find with them, one, the geometrics of the street don't really play to it. The other biggest problem is, is our services, police and fire, and other operation. I've seen City of Cincinnati has done this a number of places. Their studies actually show that people speed up between speed bumps, because they pursue, they perceive they're losing time. If you have an SUV or a pickup, you can go over them, and you don't slow down. It doesn't really solve the problem that ended up you addressing. Part of this is, you're right, it's common courtesy. I don't disagree. We've tried the, the tattooing of the, of the speed limits. I know the police have stepped up patrols. I'm not a real big advocate of speed bumps, only from the standpoint, as you said, somebody loses control, you put an impediment into the pavement, somebody hits it and loses control, we're liable for it. And that's the biggest reason I'm against them, because you put an impediment into the pavement that basically somebody has now hit. So, the studies have not borne out that they, they end up being a speed deterrent.
So, why, I guess my question is, why do you see them?
Political, political.
I'll tell you also, the fire department has indicated to me that putting in speed bumps would be very detrimental to their equipment.
No, I'm not a police officer.
Going over those bumps would tend to destroy it a lot quicker, and we'd be spending a million and a half dollars a lot quicker.
Engineering Service Director.
With regard to a couple of these last questions, these are really about how you plan the village, what do you want in it, how does it have to work together? All of those, we are more than happy at any regularly count, regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting to take a look at those. We've looked at senior housing, we've looked at some, that's kind of the repository for if you have questions like this that you want examined. Look, leaving aside all the really good reasons why this is really hard to do, when I, when I was out campaigning, people said, "People are bombing up and down the streets, it scares the hell out of us. They're our streets, and at some point, we gotta figure out how to deal with this." So, Dick, Dick is absolutely committed to figure out what we can do within some guidelines that we really do have to pay attention to. But maybe the place to start this is, get some folks, come to planning, let's put our, let's put up our arms around what it is we think we're trying to figure out, and then maybe we can go forward from there, if you, if you are so interested.
Great question, Tony. Thank you. You, sir.
Yeah, my name's Dennis Fields. I'm a twenty-eight-year-retired police officer. I live on Cooper and Otterbine. There's a crosswalk right there at Cooper and Otterbine. And I've yelled at people coming down and going up Cooper Road, where people were in the crosswalks waving their little orange flags, and they're just driving right around them like they're not even there. Can we put some kind of sign beside a little orange flag up there, a flashing light or something, to slow these people down before somebody gets run over?
On several, on several of the crosswalks, for example, on Cooper Road, we have installed flag system, where you can take the flag and start waving it as you cross the street. And that has slowed traffic down a bit, not great, but a bit. And we've got a couple of those there. We could install those at different places, perhaps, to add to our traffic safety.
Well, and we're doing what they're talking about. There are flags at that crosswalk on both sides of the street. I even bought one of those little orange men, or little green, limey-green figures and put them there, and chained them down to the street, and somebody stole the damn things. And I've, and I've been out in the side yard, cutting my grass, I saw an elderly lady trying to get across the street, she's waving the flag, and this guy drives right around her and yells at her. Now, something's gotta be done before somebody gets hurt.
I know. Can't solve dumbness.
Thank you for that question.
Hi, this is Emily Jobe. I am not, oh, are you still taking questions? Great. I was wondering if the village has ever considered purchasing one of those leaf vacuums, instead of distributing so many thousands of bags, you know, that like Blue Ash has, so they could be composted or something? Thanks.
What?
I can answer that one, too.
Oh, you're behind me.
Yeah, unfortunately, with the leaf collections, one of the reasons why we had to go to the leaf bags, if you do bulk leaf collection, you need to have an area that you can basically store them for them to biocompose. Unfortunately, the farm can only, can only take so many. The other problem is, is then you constantly have to disc them up, because as they biodegrade, the methane gas builds up. So, we have looked into this, boy, it was probably twenty years ago or so, that's when the leaf bag program started. So, it's, it's not a convenience. I can tell you, my mom's community, where she grew, where she lives, they do it. The problem is, is when you stick them out to the street, you get a good storm, the leaves end up basically scattering all the way through the neighborhood and the streets, making them a little bit dangerous and blocking catch fences. So, it's something we looked at, but it's not very practical.
Thank you, James.
Sorry, I have another question, too. Do you know what the plan is for the future-to-be-former, the gun range? Do you have any idea what the plans for that property are?
We are in talks with the city of Cincinnati, and we're hoping that they will result in our buying the gun range, or with the private partnership, buying the gun range and redeveloping it as part of Arrow Hub, so that it would become an economic driver for the community as, as posed now, where it is a gun range and it's a nuisance. That's our plan.
Okay, I think that concludes this portion, and we are adjourned. Thank you, James.
I'm sorry, I have another question too. Do you know what the plan is for the future to be former, the gun range? Do you have any idea what the plans for that property are?
We are in talks with the City of Cincinnati, and we're hoping that they will result in our buying the gun range, or with the private partnership, buying the gun range, and redeveloping it as part of Arrow Hub. So that it would become an economic driver for the community, as, as it's posed now, where it is a gun range and it's a nuisance. That's our plan.
Okay, I think that concludes this portion, and we are adjourned.